Rise and salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask everyone to please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those who have fought for our country and continue to do so today. Thank you. Our clerk will now call the roll. Here.
Ms. Macklin?
Here.
Mr. Wilday?
Here.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Bernard? Ms. Rose Ziber?
Here.
Superintendent Noriega Murphy?
Here.
Student Representative Hakawal.
Good. So we have a quorum sufficient to allow us to come together for this evening's meeting. We will now have Mr. Wilday, as he always does, introduce our interpreters for this evening's meeting.
All right, now this is becoming old hat, so anyone who's interested in accessing interpretation channels, just click the interpretation logo on Zoom and we will activate those channels now.
All right, very good. Now, the approval of minutes. Everyone's had a chance to review the minutes from April 3rd. Any questions on those? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion by Mr. Bernard, second by Mr. Drummy. Because we have a member remote, clerk will call the roll. We would typically do a voice vote, but because we have one member participating via Zoom, we have to roll call all of our votes this evening, so let me turn it over to our clerk.
Mr. Drummy? Mr. McCarty? Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Wilday?
Yes.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Ziber?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes. So those carry unanimously. Now, as I mentioned, we will hear from the Tornado Travelers Club about their recent trip, which I think in about an hour, I might need one of those. Please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Shawna Campbell. I am a science teacher at Malden High School and one of the advisors to the Tornado Travelers Club. We recently, this April vacation, traveled to Puerto Rico, and we're very excited to do something very similar next year in Costa Rica, but I have two students, Talia and Allison, that would like to report a little bit about their experience from Puerto Rico.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Talia, and I was one of the Tornado Travelers who went to Puerto Rico this, a few weeks ago, and the highlight of my trip was definitely when we went snorkeling. It was my first time ever going to Puerto Rico, and it definitely made me want to go back in the future. It was very educational, and it was like a great opportunity to bond with other classmates that I didn't know before the trip. And I can't swim, so Ms. Campbell was with me the whole snorkeling trip, holding my hand, and it was just a lot of fun to just be able to let go and just enjoy, so I really liked it.
Thank you.
And I'm telling all my siblings to go to Costa Rica next year.
All right, good evening.
Hello, my name is Allison Yu. I'm a senior who went on the Puerto Rico trip, and I had a great time going. I wanted to talk about particularly when we went to the Cabecitas de San Juan nature reserve, and we had a tour around the area just to observe like the wildlife. And the tour guide talked about like different, it's the wildlife, it's in general, but also like a different flora and fauna that we found. And one thing I found really interesting was like the mangroves, and I wanted to talk about like how interesting they were, because actually seeing them in person was a different experience, and we were also able to like taste the leaves, and sorry, taste the salt produced on the leaves, because they grew up in, the mangroves are in particularly like salty areas. So we were able to really be immersed in the wildlife while also just learning about the, the nature in San Juan, which is really cool.
Great.
We did have a few other students that were hoping to make it with us tonight, but they're involved in some other activities like rehearsals and practices.
Understood.
So thank you both for reporting about Puerto Rico. Like I said, we are very excited to do something very similar in Costa Rica next year, and we're actually here to seek approval for the 2025 trip in April for London and Paris.
All right, first, do we have any questions about the presentation? Any questions of the members? Now, let's go to Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions, one actually for the previous, the Puerto Rico trip.
Yeah.
I know, you're a senior, you said? What, what year are you in?
I'm a sophomore.
A sophomore, and was this your first time traveling like outside of the continental United States?
No, I was actually born in Haiti, so I've been in and out of that area and the Dominican Republic as well, but...
Did you travel with any students that like it was their first time?
Yes, I had my, I had my stepsister with me, and she'd never been out of the country before.
Awesome, awesome. I'm only asking because my own son foregoed going on this trip, but was thinking about going on the next one, and he's never been outside of the continental U.S., so...
He definitely should.
I'm, I'm sure he agrees with you. So obviously with Puerto Rico, there's no passport requirements, but with future trips, my question is, for students that don't have passports, do we assist or help with them navigating getting passports, you know, paperwork, and to, to just assist them in, in making this happen for them?
In applying for them, absolutely. We definitely have meetings monthly leading up to the tours and go through the process on how and when they should start that. Some people that even have passports, it needs to be actually valid six months after you return, which a lot of people don't know, so we have them bring them in and look and make sure that they will be valid, and then help them with the process to apply for a new one or a first one if they need to.
Okay, and same thing with say, students that don't have U.S. passports, born in another country and have, they're here on say, a visa or whatnot, they're still able to travel, we help them along to make sure that they're able to...
To do so, yeah, absolutely. We've had a couple people travel with visas in the past, so yes.
Wonderful. And then on, on this upcoming trip, do we have insurance for the trips that are, you know, particularly far away? Like so for Europe, if there was something that was to come up and that we had to cancel, I'm assuming the company that we use, there's built-in insurance, so students get their money back?
There are two versions of insurance. Usually the chaperones require the first level, which requires, covers like weather and any other like natural thing that could impede on the tour, and then there is an opportunity for people to opt into another insurance plan, which covers pretty much anything up until the day before, if you chose to just change your mind.
So if they got sick or...
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Wonderful.
That's all I have. I've always thought all these trips are amazing, so thank you for, for volunteering your time and doing this with the kids.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you to Ms. Batafora. Anybody else? Questions? Mr. Wilday?
Question, just less, less to the kids, because thank you for coming and sharing your experience, and more to the members. Should we pull this out of order so that we can take up their London and Paris items? So that way, we might be able to dispense with that while we're, while we're here together.
Sure. Any objection? Chair has none. Any questions?
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
If, if we could just hold that for a second, I would like to ask the students, is there anything that you would change? You talked about what went well. Is there anything you would change besides making it longer?
I think overall, the trip went really well, but if there's one thing I had to change was how cold the bus was. The bus started for like an hour or two, and the bus was really cold, and I get cold really quickly, so...
Okay, all right. Anything on your end, or?
Yeah, I think everything went well. I, I did think that like, I could have, like I did lose my glasses, which was on my end, but then everything else was what I, it was very fun.
Good.
You were able to overnight the glasses.
Oh, great, great. And what parts of Puerto Rico? All of it? You didn't get off the mainland, did you, or?
No, we didn't go to the two smaller islands. We stayed on the main island, starting in San Juan, and went to Ponce, Farhadro, Spanish, and two other like beaches, but we didn't stay in those cities, but we drove to them.
Okay, great, yeah. I was gonna suggest someday, if you, it sounds like you really loved it, check out Vieques, which is something that I'll never forget, because every single beach that they had was different. One was black sand, red sand, one was a lagoon, one was in a cave. I mean, it was pretty amazing, and you wouldn't think it because it's so small, but it was pretty interesting to see all the different aspects of that island, so. All right, let's see what we have for motions here. Please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, so you can start getting to work and let us know how we can help.
So this is motion to approve?
For London and Paris.
For London and Paris. Second by Ms. Batafora. Everybody understand what we're doing? Any questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy? Mr. McCarty? Ms. Batafora? Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Wilday?
Yes.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Bernard? Ms. Rose Ziber? Mayor Christensen?
Yes, so that carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, everyone, so now we're gonna return to the regular part of our agenda. We're gonna go to public comment. And before we do that, though, we would like to provide an update, as we said we would after the last public comment. I think as some of you know who are here, we spent much of that session talking about the Early Learning Center. And so, Mr. Wilday, our budget chair, is going to provide what we've been doing over the past month, and where we are, and where we hope to go. We also want to have Mr. Wilday update us on where we are, generally speaking, budget-wise. If you don't know, we had the meeting last week, and so for those of you who weren't there, we want to let you know where we are. So let's go to Mr. Wilday on that, before we discuss the parameters for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit of this. We were hopeful we'd get a chance to share, but we also didn't want people to have to stay until the very end, when budget's gonna be discussed. But after, we went over, I think, a couple slides, particularly pertaining to the Early Learning Center at our Budget Subcommittee Meeting last Thursday. And on a personal note, I, I appreciated the folks from the ELC, both staff and parents who spoke via Zoom, who shared their experiences and talked about some of the systemic challenges that the ELC has faced for however many years. For those of us who've been here a while, we, we know that there was a point in time that was never correct, where people would talk about the Early Learning Center, like it was a revolving, like we were just getting the tuition, the tuition was paying for the budgets, and the misconceptions, I think, have been flying for a lot of time, so it's good to be able to give it some, the attention that it deserves. I was grateful, I wasn't able to attend, but I know the day after that school committee meeting, the chair brought together the superintendent and Principal Lawrence to hear more about some of the issues that were expressed that day. And over the next two weeks, there were a handful of additional meetings with Principal Lawrence, particularly after the staff were so vocal and caring, I think, in their trust in her leadership, and where she brought in some plans and some ideas that she had worked on with, with the staff, really advocating for what the ELC needed as a first step to make it a, a little bit more sustainable. Now, granted, because, because of the Student Opportunity Act and the unprecedented $12 million increase that Mayor Christensen gave us in this budget cycle, we're able to actually take a little bit of a dent into that perception issue, which I'm excited about, and it's just step one. So for folks who'd like to discuss more, we have another Budget Subcommittee Meeting coming up next Monday, May 8th, where we can talk more about it and see where we're, see where we're at. But luckily, we are currently looking at an additional seven RBTs being placed at the Early Learning Center for next year, an additional classroom with educators and additional ESPs, an additional floating staff member, some form of building monitor, and gratefully, we're being able to put back the program manager full-time at the Early Learning Center rather than having it split. So it's a step, and it's a step that I appreciate that, that Principal Lawrence was very vocal about, and, you know, we needed to make that investment, and we needed to make that a priority this cycle, among other things. But we wanted to make sure that at least a little bit of that was shared before we get into the bigger budget update later in the meeting, and then the next actual meeting will be next Monday, May 8th, at 6:00 PM via Zoom, so you can come from anywhere, and we can talk a little bit more about what's happening in each of the buildings and district-wide, but the advocacy is truly appreciated, and I appreciate the chance to share that prior to the meeting getting going.
Very good. So now for public comment, we only ask that you state your name and address for the record. Mr. Wilday will toggle between in-person and those that want to speak to us on Zoom, and Ms. Batafora is going to keep the time. Our rules call for three minutes per, and she will give you a countdown, so when we're at thirty seconds, we'll let you know, okay? So everybody clear, name and address for the record, and three-minute timeline per speaker.
Just a quick heads up for folks online, just a reminder, you just need to use the raise hand feature on Zoom, or dial star nine if you're on the telephone, and we'll try to do some alternating, but...
Good evening.
Good evening. Alyssa Littlejohn, 127 Emerald Street in Malden. Good evening, my name is Alyssa Littlejohn, and I am a current senior at Malden High School. I would like to speak this evening about my concerns regarding the Program of Studies, specifically with inequities regarding the math and science classes offered for freshmen. I would like to apologize in advance if any of this comes across as rude, disrespectful, or targeting anyone in any way, as I did not intend for anything to come across that way. I have always been outraged by this inequity, but it is now time that I, a student who experienced this inequity firsthand, speak up and get involved, because it is not fair that students have to experience this. My mom has been speaking out against this issue for over three years, yet nothing has been changed. I hope that hearing from a student who experienced this firsthand will help you to realize how big of an issue this is. When it was time for me to pick my classes for my freshman year at Malden High School, I knew that for math, I was either going to be placed in Math 1 CP or Math 2 Honors. At the time, I did not know that they were two completely different classes. I just thought that it was the same math class, but at either the college prep level or the honors level. However, once I got to Malden High School, I quickly learned that was not the case. Freshman year, my math class was literally a repeat of eighth-grade math. I breezed through the class, and I barely learned anything, as I already knew everything that was being taught. My teachers were amazing and taught very well, however, everything they were teaching, I had already learned in my eighth-grade year of math. Within the first few weeks of the school year, I had learned that there was a Math 2 CP class offered, however, this class was not offered to freshmen, and still to this day is not offered to freshmen. My math teachers even recognized how unfair this was, and is, to freshmen, especially students like me who have a strength in math, but may not be able to handle the honors level in math at the time. My teachers also told me that they have been talking about it and trying to get it changed for years, but nothing has happened. I do recognize that beginning last school year, freshmen are now offered Math 1 honors in addition to the two math classes they were already offered, being Math 1 CP and Math 2 honors, but that still does not change the fact that it is a different class in terms of curriculum. It is the exact same class as Math 1 CP, but at the honors level instead of the college prep level.
Thirty seconds.
That does nothing to the fact that there are many students who can be in Math 2 freshman year, but need the college prep level. I can't express enough just how frustrated it makes me feel that students, especially freshmen at Malden High School, have to face these inequities with the Program of Studies, and just how little choices they have in choosing their academic classes. Because of this inequity, I lost a year of math, which meant that throughout high school, I was a year behind in math and could not take calculus senior year as I had hoped. This also meant that I could not relate to most of my peers and my friends when having conversations around math, which could not help me with my disabilities and social interactions, because I was not able to participate in those conversations.
Ms. Littlejohn, I'm sorry, we just hit the three minutes, do you have much more to go?
Just a little closing. Thank you so much for your time, and I desperately hope to see a change in the Program of Studies in the very near future that is equitable to all students. There have been many students in the past who have gone through what I have been through, and I don't want any other students to have to go through the same. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good evening. Again, three minutes, Ms. Batafora will count you down.
Now I have to talk fast. Bonnie Littlejohn, 127 Emerald Street. Good evening, I speak to you today about freshman course inequities at Malden High School. Inequities for students with disabilities and students who are average students but cannot reach that honors level yet. When my daughter told me that she wanted to speak tonight, I decided that to support her, maybe I should give another try, to point out that inequities are still happening, even over after three years of trying, by addressing my concerns several times with school staff, the Programs of Studies Committee, and also sending an email to all of you, the current school committee. Very little has been changed. I'm sorry, I'm going fast, I don't want to make sure I get this out. Without going into the details, as many of you should already know from my prior communication, it comes down to this. Positive changes towards addressing these freshman inequities stated in the current Program of Studies draft are not truly happening. Math 2 CP and Biology CP are listed as Grade 9 classes in the Program of Studies, yet they are not offered to incoming freshmen on their course selection sheets. Does this even make sense? It's a contradiction. I am certain that all stakeholders are not on the same page. I applaud the effort to include these courses as Grade 9 offerings in the Program of Studies, but in reality, it is not happening. Looks good on paper, but how good is it if it does not actually occur? In my hand, I hold two Grade 9 course selection sheets from the past two years given to eighth grade students. Math 2 CP and Biology CP are still not options, despite what the Program of Studies states. So in reality, Math 2 CP is still not offered, so how can freshmen take Math 2 honors but not be offered a Math 2 CP class? And the same with Biology. Why can they have a Biology honors class and not be offered the Biology CP class? I know staffing can be an issue, but these CP courses are actually offered at Malden High. If freshmen are allowed in honors classes with sophomores, why aren't they allowed in CP classes with sophomores? Many stakeholders present tonight, and hopefully listening again, I am telling all of you, these math and science CP courses are not being offered to incoming ninth graders on their course selection sheet, and at least, are not at least being communicated as options properly to caregivers and students. So freshmen are not in these courses at the high school.
Thirty seconds.
I was once told that caregivers give, can put in writing whatever class they are requesting, and we take that as documentation to schedule students in those classes. However, I do not understand the reason that the Malden High course selection sheet does not state that a parent actually has this option to choose courses not mentioned on the form, hence being able to put, be put into the Math 2 CP and Biology CP as choices of their freshman year. As the caregiver would not know it was offered at the high school from the San Juan form, how do caregivers and students even know these are options unless they know to ask, know to look at the Program of Studies, or know from having another child at the high school? Most if not, would just trust the course selection given to them.
Okay, thank you. We have, we have thought, Ms. Littlejohn, we have thought this was addressed, you have our word, that we will take a look at this and circle back with you prior to our next meeting. All right? So thank you, Alyssa. All right, everyone, so we're gonna go here and then online after? So far, okay, okay, take it away.
Kidoki. Good evening and Happy May. My name is Penny Calman. I'm a 24-year veteran teacher at the Salemwood School, and I live at 194 Bainbridge Street, Malden. I want to start off by thanking Mr. Adam Wilday for his years of service to the children of Malden. I have seen him grow from a student working the after-school program and summer programs to this married man who put his heart and soul into this community. Whoever wins the next election for his seat, you have a tough job filling his shoes.
Now, you know that counts towards your comments, right?
Yep. Speaking of, I truly hope the next School Committee Board will look to where help is needed and focus on those schools. Our smallest K-8 school raised over $20,000 walking around their building, while the largest K-8 school raised only $7,000, and that was really hard to do. Kudos to the Walkathon. My point is that support should go where it is needed most. So thank you, Adam, and I'm sure I'll see you around Ward 5 and maybe in a Malden school in the future. Secondly, I need to bring up the safety of our students and staff. This is the first aid kit we were given in each of our classrooms. That's nine Band-Aids, two gauze pads, one antiseptic, antiseptic wipe, and one sting relief. Where are the straps for our doors that the Malden Police Department spoke about on August 30th? When the two officers visited our Salemwood School last year, they literally laughed at us when we were, when we told them that we were supposed to use extension cords to tie our doorknobs. We need ample materials to keep our students and ourselves safe. Lastly, I can't thank Mrs. Van, Ms. Van, enough for her leadership at the Salemwood School for Principal Appreciation Day. When our last principal went missing years ago, Ms. Van took the reins and never looked back. Additionally, I need to thank Mr. Charles, Ms. Yu, and Ms. Kay in the Brunelli House at Malden High School. Much of what they do is behind closed doors, but I'm here to say it does not go unnoticed. Lastly, lastly, everybody pick up your pens and pencils. Jot down, May 17th, that is our annual food festival at the Salemwood School, where the sixth graders will bring in wonderful dishes from their background, and that's from 2:30 to 4:00 on May 17th. Got it?
Got it.
You have more time.
Oh, well, okay. No, just kidding. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody wishing to address, just your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Eden Garhurt Smith. I live at 16 Cory Road in Malden. I want to thank Bonnie Littlejohn and her daughter Alyssa as a eighth-grade parent. I agree with what she said. I want to say that Atticus brought home elective sheet, but I think it said to me as a parent that I, that the teachers get to choose what level they're going in, so I honestly don't know, but I, it's interesting, and I wish there was some kind of forum where parents like me with incoming freshmen could meet with more experienced parents who've been through this, or, or staff, as some kind of forum, because like, listening to that, that was amazing, and I didn't come here to talk about that, of course, but... And I also agree about the equity in the schools and fundraising. I give to Linden, because that's where my kids go, and I get an employer match, right? I, I do nothing, and it's not, that inequity exists, and if you want to divide up the money I give to all the schools by the number of students, I can only say I have no issue with that. I came here to speak about the budget. I know it's not done, but I'm nervous, because like, we talk about all these like beautiful things that are to have, and I know there's little caveats that say, like, we don't know yet, and I know there's like a transportation line item, and I remember when we spoke, you spoke, December 6, 2021, like I went and listened to it. It was a three-year contract with two one-year extensions for $2.5 million, and you expressed like how it needed to be passed that night, because it is a volatile number. And I know that it ends June 30th, 2023, and what I understand, it would need to go out to bid, it needs to be transparent, it has to have two weeks in like the newspaper to get bids in, right? I mean, this takes time, so I hope that if emergency meetings need to happen, and the people, stakeholders whose kids use this transportation get involved, because I think in order to do a budget, I know it's just a proposed budget and not actual budget, but we really need that actual line item in there if it's so volatile, so... And I also, if there's any other line items, because I don't know everything, like what keeps you up at night when we're talking about the budget? Like that proposed budget, what, I don't want in the fall, like Eden Garhurt Smith or dear Malden Public School parent, we're sorry, we were hoping to give you X, Y, and Z, but A, B, and C kept us from doing that. What is A, B, and C? Like, you may not know, but you probably have a better idea than I do. So I do think one line item is transportation, but what are the others? And that's my interest, so I'm hoping that while we address like the things that we want, and it would be great to have, and if we have a surplus, that's fantastic, but I also want to address the debit items, because those are harder, but they're important, because you can't have the credit if you don't deal with the debit side. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you for that. Anybody else wishing to address the School Committee can do so now.
Good evening, Mayor Christensen and Malden School Committee. My name is Deb Gesualdo, I'm president of the MEA, which is located at 77 Exchange Street. My union siblings are joining me here on International Workers' Day in the beginning of Teacher Appreciation Week to ask for the School Committee to, number one, uphold your responsibility to holding the superintendent accountable for respecting and following our collective bargaining agreements, and stand with educators in demanding an end to the repudiation of all the collective bargaining agreements that were ratified in October. Two, proactively work to provide a safe working and learning environment for all students and educators across the district. Three, work proactively toward fully staffing our schools. Four, demand that no further retaliatory actions be taken toward MEA's president of the MEA for union activities are protected by both state and federal laws. And ensure that it is clear that no retaliatory actions will be tolerated toward a single member of the MEA for protected concerted activity, and that no retaliatory actions will be tolerated toward a single parent, caregiver, or community member who stands with educators of the MEA as an ally. Typically, when I get up here to speak, I never speak about how something has impacted Typically, when I get up here to speak, I never speak about how something has impacted me. So, I want to be clear that what I'm about to say isn't just about me. I'm an employee of the Malden Public Schools and have been since I was 22 years old. I'm now 41. I've dedicated my entire life to the Malden Public Schools advocating for the advancement of public education and educators and working toward ensuring that students and families aren't suffering from housing insecurity. When my key card access to the employee entrance of 110 Pleasant was revoked approximately two and a half weeks ago without any communication or notice at the directive of the superintendent, multiple sections of Massachusetts general law were broken, as well as the Freedom to Join Act of 2019. By violating my rights as a worker by implementing a unilateral change in working conditions without notice or chance to bargain, as is required by the law, my rights were trampled on and so were the rights of my members. Restricting my access to a work site that houses both units, A and B members restricts their access to me and my access to them. Having me go in and have to tell people who I am going to see, whom I'm going to see removes the privacy that my members are afforded under the law. The action of restricting my access restrained, slowed down, interfered with, and chilled union activity. Activity that is protected under the law. The revocation of access impacted more people than just me. In good faith, two and a half weeks ago, I assumed that maybe the key card system was down, so I waited to ask about it. When we returned from the April break, I found my key card still didn't work, so I sent the superintendent an email to ask if the system was down. And that's when I found out my access was revoked. In writing, I put the superintendent on notice that laws had been broken and explained specifically which ones had been and why. The superintendent doubled down. I tried again to no avail. In a meeting on Wednesday with our MTA field rep, the MEA Vice President, myself, Attorney Greenspan, and a school committee member, we brought the issue up again. I was told that finally my access would be restored. I returned the next morning for meetings and found my key card didn't work. I emailed the superintendent to let her know. She told me it did. I don't enjoy being gaslit, so I tried again after the meeting ended and found it didn't work. I emailed again on Thursday and got no response. And unfortunately, this is how so many things go for so many people across the district, not just me. I was at a conference on Friday and couldn't try to see if it worked and never got a response to my email. After back-to-back meetings this morning, I was able to finally go over and find out that pleasantly, my card finally works. However, it's not acceptable that it ever happened in the first place. It's not acceptable that community members are emailing the superintendent and that she is telling them things that were never actually said in the meeting and things that never happened in the meeting. And this type of behavior has got to stop. The disrespect of our educators has to stop. The disrespect of our students' learning environment has to stop. Do better.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now? Anybody else? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Gold Boots and the MEA Vice President, 77 Exchange Street. Good evening to the school committee members and Mayor Christensen. One month ago, our MEA union family gathered here to express solidarity with and grave concern for our Early Learning Center union siblings. As you well remember, the concerns brought up were safety and staffing related. We look forward to hearing what progress has been made at the ELC with listening ears and continue to urge a hasty and effective plan to protect the safety of students and staff and the integrity of education for some of our youngest learners. As mentioned before in this meeting, it does seem that there are some tentative steps being made. We hope this work continues alongside ELC union members and leaders because fixing these systemic issues, like any school issue, will take time and collaboration. I would also like to speak on a different matter. When we ratified our contract in the fall, there was a historic addition of specific safety language, particularly language that any safety reports would be immediately shared with union leadership, as well as school members, leaders at the same time. This contractual language was authored in good faith, not only by MEA union leadership, but by our rank-and-file members with the spirit of accountability and teamwork. It has come to our attention that these safety reports are not being shared with the MEA, which directly contradicts the good faith agreements that were ratified in the fall by both parties. I am here to urge the school committee for us to work together as partners to keep our entire community safe. As you can see all around me and as you have just heard, we have union members from all of our work sites here today because this is an issue that is deeply and widely felt. Once again, we shouldn't have to ask for learning conditions that keep students, our families, and staff safe in school. Let's work toward collaboration, not retaliation. It's the only positive way forward.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now? All right, we just asked you to state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Griffith. I'm a resident of Malden at 17 Upham Street and also representative at large for the Malden Education Association. I'm here tonight for a few reasons. Firstly, looking forward to hearing the update regarding, as Mayor Christensen said, on April 3rd, where we are and where we hope to go regarding the Early Learning Center. As I'm sure many people here, we're here to hear. And I appreciate the work that's been shared by Mr. Weldy and I hope we'll continue to hear more as these issues are sustainably solved. And speaking of transparency, I'm also here because I'm dismayed to learn that safety reports have been shared with our school administration that have not been shared with the MEA as required by our contractual agreements. And I'm assuming that this is just as alarming to our school committee members, given the many verbal and written commitments that we've heard to transparently working together for the safety and well-being of our students. And I, I look forward to hearing how this is going to be addressed so that this needed work can be done. Essentially, I'm here to demonstrate the active listening skills that we're trying to teach our students. I'm here to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now? Anybody on that? All right, if not, we're going to close that part of the meeting. So, let's close that, Mr. Weldy. Nothing on Zoom? Let's now hear from our superintendent on district updates and highlights. Please, yeah. Just your name and address for the record, okay?
Evan Mauser. I live in Wakefield, 1 Byron Street. Yeah, I came here because I was hoping that, you know, I was concerned about the budget and how the contracts were going to go. I did want to tell you a story about some of the considerations or concerns we have about the safety in our schools, especially with the recent that Rebecca was talking about. So, I'm on the fourth floor of Brunelli House. I have two doors, both have glass. And in previous drills, it's been very easy to open my door. They say to barricade it with desks and things like that, but I've never really figured it out. So, I've kind of given up. I'm like, you know, when they said, oh, if there's a chance to get out, get out. I'm like, great, that's what I'm going to do, right? So, I have a stairwell near my door and I'm like, great, I'm going to go do that. Problem is like you're on the fourth floor and it's like if something were to happen, I know we're kind of thinking like some general ideas, but it's like, well, maybe nothing will happen, but that's where I'm going to go. But in case someone shows up, my backup plan that I had to come up with was bringing some material to defend the room with. I had a coat rack that kind of got broken, so I dismembered the coat rack and I have a wooden rod in my closet. I have a shower curtain rod that we no longer need. I put that in my closet too, so I have like two weapons to defend myself. And I have a towel rack and I have a, oh, I have also a lamp, right? Leftover lamp rod. So, I have four weapons in my classroom. So, if like someone were to break it, this is the safety precaution I have to do. I have to come with this myself because if someone were to come to the fourth floor, this is why I got to give my students to defend my classroom because they're going to probably break into that class pretty easily. It'd be really great if we had something else that might be able to, you know, block the door or some, or even the, whatever those things that they were talking about before, like to, you know, wrap up the doorknobs to make it a little safer. At least I would feel safer. I'm not saying anything's hopefully ever going to happen in Malden, but given what Evolde and it's going and all these other colleges, like you just never really know. And it's discouraging if like money's not allowed for us to get that kind of material into the classroom. So, I implore you to please seriously consider this. It's not going away. There was another situation, some guy in the yard was shooting an AK-47. You know, it's like, it's never, in Texas, it's never ending, all right? So, unfortunately, we got to, we really got to take that seriously. I would also like to encourage more staffing at the school. We really need that if we're going to address the Math 2 CP freshman problem. We should get more teachers to teach that. So, please hire more teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Let's go to our superintendent. This is the last speaker, okay? For Public Carmen.
My name is Jeremy Bateman. My address is 5 Blaine Street, Malden. I am here as a parent. I have a child in the ELC, but also a union member in the Lexington Education Association to, to say that parents in the community are watching what is happening with the union. Several of us have been people who have reached out and been dismayed by some of the responses we have gotten to emails to the superintendent's office with our concerns. I did not, there were many issues that had been raised that I was not aware of and I would be paying much more attention to. And I just wanted to say that there are parents who are watching very, very carefully what is happening. I love Malden. I want my child to go to school here. He's four and a half. We have 13 more years with you and I want them to be good ones. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. I just want to recognize the, all the staff in here, so thank you for supporting everything for our students. Today is Principal's Day, so I want to ask all of our wonderful principals to please stand up and recognize their hard work because they're amazing. Yes. You are not shy people. You are not shy. Even though he's saying no, I just want to acknowledge Joe Macedo, who is the interim principal at Freeway and also former superintendent. So, thank you for leading the Freeway School, so I wanted to acknowledge you. We also have, May celebrations are coming up and one is the Educators Week. The, I know the DPTOs are organizing a lot of celebrations. We are going to also offer you breakfast in the morning. The days that the DPTOs are not doing it, so the district is going to offer lunch, sorry, breakfast. There are different celebrations this month, Memorial Day. We have the Asian, and Asian American and Pacific Islanders, the Cinco de Mayo celebrations. You heard from our students who came from Puerto Rico and they're going to go very soon to Costa Rica next year. There have been a lot of celebrations in our schools and, yeah, you keep us busy and that's a wonderful thing. I want to talk about the curriculum and this is going to be just one slide. There's an opportunity for project-based learning. We, we have students that actually went to one unit and were able to have a whole festival where students were doing and bringing the experiences from home to the classroom and also parents helping students with projects. This is the way to go when we actually talk about the curriculum coming alive, that there are opportunities for hands-on experience. We have celebrations in many, many schools and we had one at the ELC on Saturday. We had a lot of families. We saw a lot of staff in dancing, including our wonderful principal, Ms. Lawrence. So, that was nice. A lot of families arrived. Thank you for the staff that was there to support. It was really wonderful. We have also the multicultural events in different schools where our families are coming back to our schools. So, we are getting away now from the COVID times and coming back to our schools. So, I know that we are going to have another one very soon in other schools, so we will keep you posted on that. We are recognizing also the Mental Health Awareness Month. And one thing that was requested in 2019 was to see how we can report or give access to students to report the bullying, harassment, things that are happening in the schools. So, thank you to Ms. Veritas from the high school and to the Feminism Club, to the STEM team and other groups at the high school for giving all the input. So, we are going to create these posters and going to put them around our schools, trying to make sure that students, we had the chance to report things, so they don't feel like they have to report it to anybody in the school. They can actually report it nationally. And we are talking to different partners to see how we can bring training and support for students and also staff. Critical things are happening. One of the big issues at the high school that was brought up by the Feminism Club is sexual harassment, the comments that they have to go through. So, we want to make sure that we are going to provide students with a way to report this. So, thank you to all the students and their voices have been heard. Just reminders about announcements. Early dismissal is going to happen this Friday for students at 11 o'clock. We are going to have professional development. We also are going to have the Memorial Day celebration on the 29th. There's no school, so I just want to make sure that you have that in your calendar. We are facing the last days of school, but still, we still have to come to school, have to work. So, students, if you are listening, you have to come to school, even the last day, please, please. So, we have in the month of May, 21, 21 days and we are taking MCAS. So, please start your best, students. June, we have only 12 days of school. Seniors have only two days. Our last official day, knock on wood, and please don't say no, no cheer, please. It is going to be, hopefully, June 16th. That's what we are waiting for. We do have a lot of summer programming coming up and these are going to be also posters that we're going to put around the city, are going to be in our website, so parents can get more information about our different programs. We do have one required for promotion. As we know, we still have students who have some learning gaps from COVID. So, and still struggling to adjust, so we want to make sure that we're going to provide them with what we did last year and that is great recovery, that they need just one more push in order to be able to be promoted to the next grade level. We are going to have a lot of academic programs, enrichment programs. We are going to have two exciting new programs. We are going to send more information very soon and that is STEM Enrichment Week and then the High School Leadership Institute. We do have a lot of students who want to explore leadership. So, these are not, it's open for any student that just wants to explore that. So, we want to also address some of the students that are very quiet. So, we want to bring them into the, these workshops just to see and develop their voices and to see if they want to start exploring their leadership skills. So, that is with the summer enrichment programs. Principals, guidance counselors, I see some principals already working with recommendations for summer school. The, the way to do it this year is that we want to make sure that we have the names of the students, find out the, how they're doing. And instead of waiting and say, oh, well, they're adjusting the pipeline for some schools, how do we start supporting them now that we still have them for at least two months and a half? How do we support them? So, that, a month and a half, 33 days, how do we support them? So, we don't want to just wait at the end. We want to see how we can provide them with the support. So, going to summer school would be great, but if they don't have it, if you don't have to, that would be okay too. District enrollment, it has grown, grow a little bit. We have 6,509 students. Thank you. Next, yeah. This is the comparative data and we can see now that it has been, and I don't know if you can move it up a little bit or make it small a little bit. So, in April, our enrollment was 6,481 and now, May 1st, we have 6,509. So, our enrollment is growing and we are trying to adjust the staffing according to the growth in our student population. Then we have the Welcome Center. We do have students who are in the queue. That means the students who are still working with application process. In kindergarten, we had three applicants in grades one to 12, it's 38. So, hopefully, they're going to join our schools very soon. We have waiting lists from BB, Freeway, and Linden, Salemwood. Students are in school but just waiting to be transferred to these schools. And you can see the grade levels in there. Out of district, our enrollment always increases, so we, our waiting list increased again. So, we are trying to see if we can hire more staff. So, on Saturday, thanks to the leadership of Ms. Merz, we are going to have a hiring fair where we can actually hire on the spot for anybody who would like to work and qualifies to work at the, out of just, of most, the most programs. Human resources and licensures. I know there have been a lot of questions about what is the district doing? So, very soon you're going to see bulletin boards, billboards, the advertising about working in these wonderful schools. You are going to receive flyers. We have already sent all our positions that are posted right now to colleges, universities, and different organizations to promote our schools. We have still employees who are working with the licensures, are working with emergency licensures, waivers. And I have to give kudos to our Director of Human Resources, who is working very hardly to work at making phone calls, trying to make sure that people know what they're supposed to be doing, not just an email, but actual personal phone call. So, we expect and we are waiting for results that people that took the MTEL, they're coming up. So, we want to just wait for those results. We are hoping that everybody passed the MTELs, so we can actually reduce these numbers. If staff didn't pass the MTELs, we will, we continue working with them to see opportunities for next year, even with waivers. So, that is what the human resources staff is doing, trying to support all our employees who need that support. In the next slide, you can see, and we have been just advertising this, the positions posted in our schools. And it has increased because we have posted some of long-term substitution substitutes because of people who are actually going to have babies, yay, some medical leaves. So, therefore, you will see that it's increasing here and that is because it's a long-term substitute. We do have different positions and we, we appreciate if we promote these wonderful schools with wonderful staff, students, and parents. And you can, this is going to be posted this week in our website. You can see at the high schools, Salemwood, and the district. This is the flyer that we are going to, that we send to colleges and also nonprofit organizations. If you know the people that can, that you want to share this with, we will send it to all of you, every single one of you. We want to make sure that in August, we have all our schools fully staffed and that means that we will rely on you also trying to recruit for, for your schools. This afternoon, we talked with the principals to see how they can also support us recruiting for the schools. This is not the billboard that you're going to see. The other one is a little more active, but just to let you know that you're going to see this in all our stores. And I will once again ask you to please promote our positions. There are three documents that, yes, I was mentioning before, we are going to send to policy. We are going to take a look and to the program studies again because Ms. Littlejohn, we will look at the things that we thought would change. So, we will go back into that because it's critical to make sure that whatever we put in paper, we stick to it and that we actually offer every single student opportunity to be successful and have a trajectory that they actually, the parents and the students have discussed. So, I want to make sure that we are going to look, give you feedback on this next time. We don't have a concrete harassment policy, so therefore, we are going to present that to you to be adopted for next school year. And I'm going to invite right now Ms. Emily's, thank you, Penya, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And this is last, three meetings ago. This is in response to the students who are performing above grade level that we are going to put in the handbook. We share it with some parents to make sure that this is something that we all agree on. And if you want to just take it away, thank you, Ms. Emily's Penya.
Can you hear me okay? There, better. So, I'm going to share this framework with you. It's divided into six areas, so it's going to be the rationale for having a framework for how we support our students who are performing above grade level. It's how we identify them, the process that we're using for identification, the student action plan that we want to put in place, professional development, and then finally, the tiered system of support. So, if you just stay on here, just for the rationale, I mean, this is going back to conversations we've been having about the AEAP program and what that could look like if it closed at the Linden. And so, this is for students who have learning needs that go beyond what is traditionally offered in the regular classroom and require differentiated learning experiences and opportunities for them to maximize their potential. So, that's kind of the big picture, why we're doing this. In terms of identification, we're not going to have a formal application like we were doing for the AEAP where they were taking, you know, four assessments and the writing prompt and letters of recommendation. So, what we're doing is we are reviewing course grades. We are going to rely on data, so we have DIBELS I Ready and IXL. And then we also want to continue to look at who is on these action plans and that it is reflective of the students in our school community. So, if you could go to the next slide, the process is going to be that we administer in the fall, winter, and spring the I Ready and IXL assessments. And so, when principals and directors and coaches and teachers come together and look at these assessments, we're going to look to make sure that the students that we are recommending for Tier 2, which will be the last section that you will see on this framework, these are students that have met all of the standards and their grade level skills up to and including their grade level. And these are reports, as you heard in our last school committee meeting or two school committee meetings ago, that we could easily access in our I Ready, you know, assessment or the skills that the IXL assessment lets us know if students have met all of the skills, so meaning all of the grades leading up to the grade that they're in. And so, once these students are identified, these will be students that can qualify for Tier 2 instruction. And then if you qualify for Tier 2 instruction, then that means that we, we would put you in an action plan. And so, if you can go to the next slide, so the student action plan, it's not linked on here, but when we go into the tiered system of support, it's a plan that would allow teachers to identify for which subject area. So, which of the four content areas the student needs this additional enrichment and then they could pick from the menu of options. In addition to that, all of this is being piloted next year, but we're also looking at the arts because we know that students are gifted across, you know, not just academics, but also in the arts. So, we are looking to see if it's in arts or in music or, you know, one of our other exploratories to see what additional enrichment opportunities we could offer there as well. We recognize that, you know, differentiating the curriculum is not always the easiest. And so, we are looking at professional development that we want to offer this summer to help with this. We are looking to offer a week of professional development this summer for the staff, but it is optional. Like staff don't have to go. I know they value their summer. So, we'll have to work closely to see some, some of this PD, how it could be offered when it's part of like either, you know, our beginning day of PD or during our early release days. And then if you go to the next slide, I know, okay. So, then this is going to be the tiered system of support. So, there's going to be three tiers and Tier 1 is what you would expect all students to receive in their classrooms. And then I'll go a little more in-depth into Tier 2 and Tier 3. So, the next slide? Thank you. I know this is really tiny, so I'm pretending I could read from this far. So, Tier 1 is going to be a lot of the core instruction, right? The grade level, high-quality instructional materials that we have purchased along with differentiating that core instruction. And that's for everybody. And then in the Tier 2, some of the options that we can pick from is looking at advanced skill instruction, looking at further differentiation, a menu for learning, looking at flexible grouping, independent study, extensions or enrichment, or even extracurricular learning. And all of those are described there. I just can't read it. And then for Tier 3, this is where I think there's still some work to do. We're going to pilot for next year if it is, if the schedule allows it for single-subject acceleration. So, if your child is really excelling in math and has met all of the skills and the standards and is functioning at a third-grade level, how can that student then participate with third-grade students? There are some challenges to that. The third-grade, you know, schedule may not align with the second-grade schedule. So, like I said, this is something that we are willing to explore for next year. Whole-class acceleration, right now, we have a policy in Malden that we do not do whole-class acceleration. So, even though that is one of the options that we could potentially consider, it is just not a viable one right now. And then just the individual approach, right? And then just the individual approach, right, like if the single subject acceleration is not enough, nor are the Tier Two options that we're offering, then it's coming to the table to see how can we best meet the needs of the student.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I have, thank you. So I want to also give kudos to your team for putting everything together. So this is going to be presented to you in the form, the entire format. Then I will ask Ms. Toni Mertz to join me here, and we are going to go over very, so about going over the preliminary budget. This was presented during the subcommittee, so it's not new information. This is the same, they are the same slides, but we wanted to make sure that was also a part of the big forum, so people can hear it twice. All right, this slide.
So this is our historical data on Chapter Seventy, and yes, we're finally seeing some revenue for Chapter Seventy. On the next slide, you can actually see the comparison to other communities. I still believe that we're not getting our fair share of Chapter Seventy. If you take a look at other communities, especially your Emirates and Chelsea, what they're getting for Chapter Seventy versus what Malden's getting for Chapter Seventy is huge, and I think we still need to advocate for more Chapter Seventy Eight at the state level, given the numbers that you see here. So again, looking at Chelsea where they have approximately 100 more students, give or take, the amount of Chapter Seventy that they're getting compared to us is all fifty thou, I mean fifty million dollars more. I mean, the amount of money that we could do with that kind of revenue and the positions that we could add, so again, I would advocate for changing that Chapter Seventy formula, because right now, the way it stands, it does not benefit Malden at all.
I think to echo Ms. Mertz's sentiments, one of the things that we talked about in the budget subcommittee meeting, the first one, and I think we'll, I didn't mention the last one, we'll reemphasize, but this is a really good time for us as a community to be lulled into a false sense of comfort around the Chapter Seventy funding formula, because it's, we have this perfect storm coming at us right now. If there's an increase, it's not a, it's not a legitimate enough increase that what we need, but we're also sort of being eclipsed by the allocation that we're getting from the city, because 12 million bucks is, we've never seen anything that high. We're seeing the Student Opportunity Act kick in, so all of these things put together, I think, could easily lull us into a very false sense of comfortability around where we're at in terms of state funding, and it's really important, I think, that we don't let up in terms of keeping the pressure on our legislators to make some kind of legitimate, and Senator Lewis was here a couple months ago and shared with us some of those opportunities, and I think we can't let up. We need to make sure they make some of those substantive changes, because this is good, but you can see from the discrepancy that it still very much exists.
Let me just add as well, Mr. Wild, I do want to acknowledge, in addition to you, Ms. Mertz, the efforts of Ron Hogan from the city side to do a deep dive into this complex formula, and if you need further evidence of what we're up against, I would ask everyone to look at the required contribution column. And if you compare that with the Chapter Seventy Eight column, that's the column that has us really concerned about where we're going in the future, because when Chapter Seventy's increase, and so is in that required contribution column, and that's one we're really watching, and that's one that we've been trying to change over the past several years. This was the first year that we've had some success in the budget proposal introduced by Governor Haley and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll. They had a line item in there to start addressing this required contribution column. Now, I don't think it survived the House, so we're now working to include it in the Senate's version of the state budget, which they would then come together to negotiate, which we then hope would make it back to the governor. So that's what we'd ask all of you to do, if you have a moment, to email, you know, our state delegation advocating for that column to really be addressed, because if it's not, that will catch up with us in short order, and we will have a major issue to address.
I mean, for what it's worth, I would also mention, because there are a lot of people here tonight, not just our state delegation, especially for folks who teach in Malden and live in other communities, hit, hit your people, because our people support the changes. We need to make sure other legislators around the state do something that might negatively benefit their community, but would positively benefit Malden, Alin, Chelsea, et cetera. So we need all of them.
Next slide. Okay, where are we at today? So we started the year with the 80 million dollar budget. Given all of our contractual obligations, that's coming in at approximately 5.3 million. We had budgeted about 1.6 million in ESER Two that we're flipping onto the budget, because we want those positions to stay, and we want them to stay here, right? So if you budget them in a grant that ends, that means those positions would end, and that would mean layoffs, so we're moving those all onto the budget, so they are part of our baseline going forward. And our operations and maintenance, right now preliminary is coming in at about approximately 1.4 million, so in total, we're about 88.5 million, and the new budget that the city has given us, thank you to Mayor Christensen and his team, along with the Chapter Seventy increase, brings us to about 91 million. So we have about a gap of about 2.7, almost 2.8 million, where we can add new positions.
Toni, you say gap, just for the folks who are listening, I hear gap, and I think negative.
No, no, these are good gaps.
Yeah, surplus, which is great.
To balance our budget.
And I wish, I know Eden spoke about this earlier, but one of the things we'll talk about a little later is if you look, there are pieces in there, we went over this at our first budget meeting, on contractual obligations, where you'll see things like our transportation potential, so there's, it's, it's in here, but I think we need to flush it out a little bit more. You learn, right, when you think that you're saying something out loud and everyone understands your own thought process, but it's good to know sort of how to flush that out a little bit more thoroughly for people to understand where we're at. But thank you, Toni.
Yes. So what are we looking at with the 2.7? Well, we're looking at adding building monitors to every school. We're looking at adding school culture officers to our K eights in high school. We're looking at adding adjustment counselors to some of our schools, looking to add Spanish teachers to Linden and Ferryway, because Forestale and Salemwood and BB already have those teachers. We're looking at an additional Wilson reading teacher at Forestale, an additional RBT at Ferryway. We're looking at an assistant principal for Forestale, since they only have one, where other schools have two. We're looking at an additional admin assistant at Forestale, again, they're the only school that has one, where other schools have two. We're looking at additional middle school STEM teacher at the Forestale. We're looking at a grade four, either Gen Ed or SCI at Ferryway. We're looking at an additional math teacher at the high school, an additional health teacher at the high school, an ELL coach district-wide, along with those adds that the ELC will be getting. So they're not on this slide, but they will be added to the slide as one of the items that we're looking to add to the budget.
It's the other slide.
Next slide.
We put it together, yeah, we have it, yes, it's right there.
Yeah, and I'll mention for the folks watching, because this is good, we can kind of do both things at the same time, the superintendent and Director Mertz went back, met with building leaders, met with us as individual members, listened to priorities, and went through the process of culling what potential additions should be, some of the questions that were asked last Thursday. This list right here currently is more than the amount of money that we actually have to spend. This is just the preliminary wish list, and we say that because it is preliminary. The idea would be that more conversations between now and next Monday would happen, and then a more formalized proposal saying, this is it, this is what we're looking at to adopt potentially, and this is how it fits the expected number that you have, will come from there, and we'll be able to kind of call out what some of the positions are, where it's needed, and looking at, I think, the two core values that we shared, which were creating a little bit more unanimity and opportunity for kids across the K eight schools, and also making sure that we pull as much off of ESSR grants as humanly possible, so that we never have to worry about whether or not a position is just going to disappear under the guise of it was grant funded, so it's, it's got to go. So we were able to move all of that, and we are very appreciative for that, Toni.
Okay. So I think we still have to meet with a couple more principals and some directors before we can finalize what that list is. Thank you.
Sure.
So one of the things that you're going to notice in the budget is that we want to allocate most of the funding, if not all the funding, to schools, boots on the ground, not so much in central office, because we know, and as a principal teacher, and know that boots on the ground is where we need the people, so you will see that most of the positions, if not all, are going to be in schools.
And again, I'll just mention for folks watching, this is the slide where we kind of outline what our preliminary plan is for the ELC. I will also, and because you mentioned it superintendent, and we said it at our last budget meeting too, I am very appreciative, as one member at least, I think, we haven't had a year, I don't think we've had a year where we haven't had to think about some kind of cut in a really long time, but whenever there's any kind of a surplus, the very first thing that people run to do is put all of the director positions back, and then inevitably the year later, they go away, and we have a director of performing art, they come and then they go, and I was very appreciative to sort of see that the majority of this is classroom teachers, ESPs, people in classrooms with kids, and not necessarily things that we just add for adding sake and then taking away, but we went over this a little bit already in the, at the outset of the meeting, and I think as we flush out more of the plan with Principal Lawrence, we'll be able to present next Monday what we're really hoping to see at the ELC.
That's it.
Oh, that's the last slide.
And I should just mention, I know I talked about the conundrum around the local contribution that's coming our way. Be that as it may, what you've just reviewed would not have happened if it wasn't for the legislative delegation that Adam touched upon. So if you do see State Senator Jason Lewis or any of our three representatives, Kate Lipper-Garabedian, Stephen Eltrino, Paul Donato, the reason we were able to present this this evening was through their efforts, but we still have this, I used to say long-term, but now it's short-term, because as Chapter Seventy increases, it's going to hit us on the local contribution side, which will conflict soon. So we still have to work on that, but larger picture is we're able to do this tonight because of their support. So, Mr. Wild, I think you just covered the budget subcommittee. Do you have to add anything?
We've got a little bit more, maybe we'll wait till we get down there.
Over there.
Okay.
We're at the budget subcommittee, under subcommittee reports. Do you have anything you have to add?
Yes. So, well, two, two very quick things. One, which we already mentioned, but I'll reiterate, that the next meeting is next Monday, May eighth, at 6:00 PM via Zoom, and the other was Ms. Spatafor wanted to touch on the transportation contract piece, so that it was spelled out a little bit more clearly.
All right, let's do that. Sure. All right, Ms. Spatafor, let's go over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as Ms. Garhart Smith brought to our attention, the transportation contract back in 2021 was discussed, I believe we were implementing like our one-year extension that was built into it, especially because we were in the midst of COVID, and we knew our contract would be coming to an end. Notes to us, our legal counsel actually advised that we do not have to put this contract out to bid. So, under Chapter Thirty B, there is contracts that are exempt from going out to bid, and under that is transportation contracts delivered to children with special needs. So, in the climate that we're in, as we all know, gas prices were up, down, who knows where, we spoke to some transportation providers. Basically, our, our size, our student body that we transport is too high for anybody to take us on, other than our current provider. And if you're not aware, our current provider, we refer to as NRT, was actually purchased by Beacon Mobility, which is a national transportation company. So Beacon now owns NRT, in which NRT had purchased Vanpool, they're pretty much a conglomerate in this area, and pretty much our only choice for transportation, as we transport 400 special needs students, a little bit over 300 in district, and as we can see in the totals, close to 80 out of district. So, if people were wondering why there was not a bidding process, why you didn't see it in the newspaper, that is the reason why, basically, we really don't have any options. NRT, Beacon Mobility, also, when discussing our contract and with, I don't know if anybody recalls when we were sitting in this position, I wasn't in this position in 2017, but our, our transportation provider, our contract was up, and they were going to go up 5 million on us. It was, it was going to hurt us tremendously. Our current provider is going up minuscule. I want to say it was 300,000, as Ms. Mertz has given me a, so with the addition of, of, you know, vans and buses on the roads, we're transporting more kids, the price of gas, you know, salaries for drivers and monitors, it really was a no-brainer for us.
So do you need this committee to take an action this evening, or is this more an FYI?
This is just more of an FYI.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Spatafor. Did you want to, I want to open it up to members, did you have anything else?
Real fast, just to, for members' sake too, because I asked the same question, it made a difference, right, because we, excuse me, we were only working with special ed transportation, and I had wondered about whether or not homeless transportation made that difference.
Separate.
Separate, and so there was a, an opportunity where I think we have, we have only been offering special ed transportation for a number of years now, and still have been going about the process, as if we were operating with regular ed transportation. So we, the fact that we were able to have that come in as low as it did when two, two years ago, a year and a half ago, we were staring down well over one and a half million, was a pleasant surprise, and I know that that took a lot of work behind the scenes on behalf of Director Mertz, Ms. Spatafor, so I appreciate that as well.
Very good. Thank you both. Now, let's open it up to any questions of our budget subcommittee chair, or vice chair, or the superintendent on her report. Let's go to Mr. Bernard first.
Just real quickly to Ms. Spatafor on the, on the transportation, having been in the transportation industry at one time, and knowing that, yes, that we, you have to go and deal with gas and, and insurance and all the unexpected costs that, that happen, I do know we've had, and we've heard it several times over this last year, actually over the last, the whole of my term, where we've heard from complaints about NRT meeting the terms of their, of their contract, and it sounds to me like we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place on that budgetarily, or I should say, because there's nobody that has the capacity, but do we have anything that we can go and we can hold against them, you know, penalty-wise or anything, just to go so that if there is, you know, behavior that goes and affects our students, student, you know, we've heard several times that students have been held on the bus for longer than an hour, which is, puts the district at risk. We've heard terms of, not recently, but students going in and maybe not getting treated as well, or having a misbehaving bus driver, you know, do we have anything in place, knowing that we can't go with anyone else, that we can kind of go and hold them to that, even if it's, you know, some sort of monetary penalty, so we can get something back from them when this happens?
Spatafor.
Yeah, so we've actually had meetings in the past, where we've kind of held that over their head in, in terms of breaking their contractual obligations. I will say that the superintendent does meet with NRT on Fridays to make sure they're kept in line, so to say. I think with anything in life, there's always going to be some sort of complaint. Sometimes stuff happens, and I say that as a special needs parent whose child is transported from NRT, and I have picked up the phone and called them when I've had issues, so I, I'm boots on the ground, I know that nobody's perfect. And we have worked with them and said, hey, if you're not going to, you know, provide this service, we're going to have to, you know, move to another company and pull some kids, and that's money out of your pocket. So we've definitely held them to the flame, in which they have responded, and, and have implemented more training for their drivers and monitors, have implemented, I'm not sure what it's called, the like, being able to track your child, find your child on your phone, so the kids, the parents can, you know, track their kids. So we're definitely making sure that they're sticking to the contract, and, you know, it's not just about money, it's about our kids. And the last thing I would want to do, when we think about contractual changes, is uprooting students that are, you know, that have been with a driver for four or five years, so we take that into consideration as well.
Yeah, thank you. I just, just to go and just throw it in, you know, having worked as a bus driver, you do go and, they become your kids, and you want to make sure that they get to school on time, you want to make sure that they get home on time, and flat tires happen, you know, gas prices, again, gas prices go up, flat tires happen, you get in the bus, and there's a kid that's going and having a difficult day, having a big emotion, something happens in the bus, you, you know, you have to go and deal with it, and that goes and puts a delay there. So I understand that there's, there's certain things that just go and happen there, I just want to go and make sure that we are not going and, you know, letting that slide, and, you know, I don't want to go and throw any more work onto contracts and negotiations and Howard and all that, but I do want to make sure that if they, if we're seeing consistent bad behavior, that, you know, there's some repercussions for them, that we get some recompense, that eventually comes back to the school systems, you know? Like you said, it's about the kids.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bernard. Soup?
Yep, just one thing about finding my boss, that is something that's coming up. We have been working with them, and hopefully we will be able to do it right away, because that would help the parents to monitor, so, thank you, I just want to clarify that, thank you.
All right, very good. Seeing there are no other questions, let's go over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick notes on the superintendent's report, and honestly, they're not questions, they're just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. One was the say something, the see something, say something, just express appreciation for seeing that come to fruition. That's one of the things that I know Kerry Veritas and the club at the high school, I know that they've met many times with Ms. Spatafor, I know that Ms. Long have been working on this, to see that come, be a thing and come to fruition, it's very much a testament to like, don't let up on something, that it will eventually, it'll eventually happen. One note that I noticed, I don't know if anybody else noticed, and we're thinking about the budget that is planned for, that we, we have finally hit the highest enrollment that our public schools have seen since at least 2017, so the fact that we've been talking a lot about sort of the, the slow progressive climb, we definitely hit it. Thank you, I appreciate the licensure update, that's one thing, it's nice to see those numbers shrink. Those numbers have been rapidly shrinking, I mean, licensure is just a money-making scheme from Desi, but at the same time, it's nice to see it happen, and we know that we, the last thing we want is for people to have to be issued any kind of non-renewal letters based on licensure. So the fact that we're seeing that number shrink down is great, and I appreciate, and I know you'll expound on it more at the next meeting, but the efforts to do more recruitment for the upcoming year, and just anecdotally, and I'm really hoping, I can't see who's on Zoom, but I don't know why anybody from my district would be on Zoom, but I will say one thing that, that stuck out to me is I saw billboards, and I know that when you see that, everyone's first reaction is like, what, billboards? So we did a billboard in my district, and the amount of people that reached out looking for some kind of, and we, I mean, I think I hired at least three paraprofessionals for next year, no, four, four ESPs and one ELL teacher so far, because of the billboard. So hopefully it brings some similar results to Malden, but any kind of creative marketing, I think, is, is good creative marketing, so thank you for the work behind that.
Thank you, Mr. Wild. Thank you. Ms. Rose Ziberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick questions about the summer program? I've done two questions, just how are we doing staff-wise for both like the ESY programs, and also then the, you know, the ones that parents can sign up for? And also, if parents are interested in signing up, is our application material already available? I know people start thinking ahead to try to get into these programs, so curious if, I think top priority goes to people already in the program, so sort of that idea of, you know, what are we looking at as far as parents' expectations may be for what might be available for them over the summer?
No problem. So we have, we posted all the positions, coordinators and teaching staff, and they have been, we have been holding interviews for them, because we want to make sure we have the staff. Some of the programs are recommended by, because of the data and by administrators, that's the correct recovery. The other ones, when you go into the SQR, you can actually see the applications, and we are going to send this flyer, now that it's finalized, we're going to send it to to the families, connect end, and we're going to translate it in multiple languages to make sure they have access. And we are trying to see if we can get a big, big volunteer through in the door, so when parents drop off their children, they can just scan things or they can have a paper copy, because some parents do not have the phones. So, you know, technology is not the thing, so we want to make sure every single parent has access. But we started out already, we, my staff, already started to interview people for those positions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rose Zieberg. Seeing there are no other questions, I would ask you to turn your attention to Ms. Batafora, where we're going to talk about the harassment policy, student and family handbook, pre-K-12 program studies, pre-K-12. And I believe these are, are these all referrals? Okay, let's go over to Ms. Batafora.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Yeah, very easy. So these are, all three are just looking to get referred to policy and procedure for review before, I believe we'd like to take a look at this ASAP so we can come back to this committee in June for approval, so.
Very good. Any objection to bundling? Chair has none. Motion by Ms. Batafora, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Wilday?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Zieberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kristensen?
Yes, that carries unanimously. Personal privilege item number six. Any points of personal privilege before we entertain a motion to go into executive session? Mr. Bernard.
Let me go and find my lovely email from Ms. Van, this is some updates from the Salemwood. Also, I just want to go and say it is International Workers' Day, so, anyone that went and happened to go and march through East Boston and Chelsea, thank you. So at Salemwood, they are still collecting money for their May calendar fundraiser, ten bucks for one chance, twenty-five for three chances. If you would like to go and get a chance to win, please send the money in with your kid at Salemwood Main Office. On Monday, Monday, May eighth through Friday, May twelfth, is Teacher/Staff Appreciation Week. And personally for me, thank you guys, I know you guys do hard work. Friday, May nineteenth is K-8 Spring and Class Pictures Day. On the thirty-first through June sixth is the Book Fair. There will be more details forthcoming. And also personally for me, it's someone's birthday today who's on Zoom, so I want to go and just say happy birthday to Ms. Macklin. I noticed it on Facebook, so I wanted to say happy birthday.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Over to Mr. Drummy, and then we'll go to Ms. Rose Zieberg.
Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to say congratulations to the Ferryway PTO. They brought back International Food Night, which we haven't seen since COVID, and they had a great time the other night, as the chairman and the superintendent can attest to, especially the mayor, he had more pictures taken than Cara has pills, but, you know, we expect that, so thank you for coming. It was a good time. Tuesday, actually tomorrow, MCAS is going to start at the Ferryway for grades three to eight, and the Ferryway Theater Club will be presenting Wind of the Willows, and that will be tomorrow and on the fourth of May at four-thirty in the school auditorium. Friday, as the superintendent said, is early release day. Saturday, the sixth, Malden Bike Fair at the Ferryway. This is being cosponsored by Councilors Winslow and Crowe. And, oh God, there's a bunch of people that I can't remember because I'm old, but they are sponsoring it, the police and the fire will be there so the kids can participate. And it's, it's a really a good day. This is either the second or third time they've had it, and it's really enjoyable. And if you have a bike that needs to be fixed, Steve, I think he can talk them into fixing it, he's usually pretty good about that. On Monday, the eighth, school pictures will be taken at the Ferryway. And Tuesday, the sixteenth, and Wednesday, the seventeenth, the Science MCAS will be held down there. Also, Wednesday, the Ferryway PTO will be having their Zoom meeting at six-thirty PM. If you log on to their website, they'll have all the information to get into it. Again, the twenty-ninth, Memorial Day, no school. Congratulations, Teacher Appreciation Week. And last but not least, it's Mother's Day. And it's that time of year, if you want a cheap breakfast, and by that I mean, it doesn't cost you anything, come down to Anthony's on the fourteenth, Mother's Day, from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty, and the children can give mom breakfast for free. And there's also going to be some giveaways and some, well, come on down and find out. It's a good time and happy Mother's Day to all. And happy birthday, Dawn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Drummy. We're going to go to Ms. Rose Zieberg, then over to Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will add my happy birthday to Dawn, happy birthday, Dawn. And want to give congratulations to the ELC PTO for the spring fair that they put on, it was absolutely excellent. I did manage to stop by and check that out. And at the Linden, coming up on May twelfth, there's a multicultural celebration, which will be from six to eight. Raffle tickets will be on sale and that is cash only. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose Zieberg. Over to Ms. Batafora, and then Mr. Wilday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Title One will be holding their Care Governor Workshop for Summer Success on Wednesday, May third, at eight-thirty in the BB CAF. Thursday, I'm very excited, for the lifting spirits therapy horses that will be visiting students in the Pace Classroom. And if you were around watching TV around Easter time, you might have saw a little horse that was in the running to become like the Cadbury Egg spokesperson, and he was a lifting spirits therapy horse. He did not win, so hopefully we see him on Thursday. Friday is the Grade Four Music Concert, and as well as early release, students will be dismissed at eleven AM. I'm losing my train of thought. Happy birthday, Dawn. Policy and procedure meetings coming up will probably be held via Zoom because I am hoping to be in labor and delivery with my daughter delivering her first child Wednesday. And last but not least, it is with great pleasure that I announce my candidacy for reelection to the Malden School Committee.
Okay. But, Mr. Wilday, you might want to end with Ms. Batafora, but let's see if you could top it.
I know. Happy birthday, Dawn. Had to say it. Real fast, just wanted to also echo a few things. One was congratulations to the Early Learning Center, that was a really cool fair this weekend. I purchased a couple of things that I did not need, and it was, it was a lot of fun. And congrats to the Ferryway PTO for their Rock the Walk event, which was a really great time. I'm glad that Penny Kalman mentioned the International Food Fair at the Salemwood on May seventeenth. And then the only last thing I mentioned, I have a text from Don Concanon that says, make sure to wish Don Concanon a happy Principal's Day, which, no, I'm just kidding. But in all seriousness, happy Principal's Day, National Principal's Day to our stellar staff who, who deal with, with what? You, we will get you a breakfast. No, we, we have, we are very lucky to have the principals we have. I know on a personal level, I learned a lot about what it means to be a principal and to lead with, with your heart from Don Concanon, and so I appreciate the group that we have here. It'd also be remiss, Keith mentioned May Day, but also that next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we won't be together until June. Well, tomorrow, it's weird, right? Because tomorrow's the day, but next week's the week. It's very weird. I'm doing two things at my school. So tomorrow is like International Teacher Appreciation Day, and then next week, the eighth through the twelfth is the week. We're going to appreciate everything and appreciate the people we have by passing a budget that supports our school. So that's, that's what we're going to focus on over the next month. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Wilday. We'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Mr. Drummy, seconded by Ms. Batafora. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy? Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Wilday?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Mr. Bernard?
Ms. Rose Zieberg? Mayor Kristensen?
Yes. That passes unanimously. The school committee will now be in executive session.
Thank you to our interpreters, we appreciate you.
Recording stopped.